May I have everyone's attention, please? Good evening. Welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Sessions. This is Tuesday, March 27, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Mattson.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on to the invocation, Councilwoman Green, please.
I would like to take the time for us to take a moment of silence to honor the lives of Ivan Flancha and Zachary Anthony. They were two firefighters who lost their lives in York this past week fighting a fire. I'd also like to take the time to honor former Harrisburg Fire Chief Dan Solier, who passed away from his battle with cancer. And lastly, I'd like to keep in our thoughts and prayers our current fire chief, Chief Interlin, who was in the hospital. From what I understand, he's back out, but we'd still like to keep him in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Ben Allitt.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Moving on to communications tonight, we first have a presentation by representatives of the HAC workforce and development team, Dr. Ski and Mr. Victor Rogers. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. We are delighted to be here tonight. We appreciate that you're taking some time out to listen to a few points from your favorite community college, the largest, the oldest, and we believe the finest, community college in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. I just want to give a very quick intro. First of all, to let you know that there are nearly 8,500 students on the Harrisburg campus. As you know, we have five campuses total for a total of 19,000 students. We also are serving about 25,000 individuals in non-credit workforce development activities. We have been working closely with various agencies in this community to develop programs that will assist all of the citizens of Harrisburg and beyond. Most recently, we've been working closely with the Harrisburg Housing Authority. We've worked with the mayor's office in regards to Harrisburg Promise, looking at providing young students at Stilton High Spire and the Harrisburg school system an opportunity to start getting familiar with college. And down the road, we hope to offer some scholarships that will be able to serve those individuals to come to your favorite community college in several years. One of the programs, though, that we're here to talk about tonight is the STEP program. It's an acronym, as most things in education are. And Vic Rogers, who is our Associate Provost for Workforce Development, is going to provide you a concise overview of that program for us to determine how we may be able to work more closely with the city in offering this program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ski, and thank you for inviting us. Ms. Williams, I really appreciate it. You've had a chance to listen to this earlier and thought it was some value, so I appreciate that, as well as Dave, all the work he's done. We started the STEP Academy, which stands for Stand Up, Take Action, Expect Results, and Put In The Work, about August of 2016. And it was really in response to our industry and business leadership telling us that the men and women coming into their employment didn't have the skills necessary to really be competitive and to keep their economic futures bright. So what we looked at was exactly what skills they felt were needed and came up with an academy, a four-week academy, that really encapsulates all of those and gives people who come through that an opportunity to not only gain those skills, but then further get into real skilled training. What it does is it looks at everything from how do we shake hands? How do we greet each other? How do we resolve conflicts? How do we work as a team? And when we found that we put these skills together in this academy model, what's happened is it's allowed those individuals to have a sense of self-worth that's far beyond what we thought initially would be. After that was done, we then gave them options for skilled training, for CNC welding, for office professional, for machinist. And that has resulted in quite a few of those who have come through our program having an opportunity for employment. We originally started with our reentry population because they had the most need within our community. And that's kind of morphed out into not just the reentry population, but the populations throughout our community who need help, those who are underserved, underemployed. We've been taking this model and taking it into high schools around our 65 school district region that HAC serves because it's the same model of people who are coming out, going into the workforce, and not having those skills necessary to be competent, to fit into the work environment. So Dave and I had the conversation and started talking about how could we give the citizens of Harrisburg an opportunity to better leverage this training for the jobs that we know that are there? The real dichotomy that we all face is that there are plenty of job openings and plenty of people who want jobs, but getting them to meet in something that is equitable for everyone has been a difficult challenge. We feel like STEP helps us meet that challenge, and we want to work closely with you to make that happen.
Okay. I'll open up for any questions that Councilwomen may have. Ms. Green, do you have any questions?
Right now, I don't have many questions. One is, what is the target age population that you guys look to work with?
Again, we have gone everything from high school all the way to our elder population. We have had people who have been reentranced and spent 30 to 40 years in the criminal justice system, coming out and not having any clue on what the work environment is. What we have found is that there is no work ethic that is some kind of inherited function of any person. It's a matter of experience. And when people haven't had that experience, that's when the problems occur. So we try to give them access to the culture that the work environment has. And again, it could be high schoolers who've never had a side job. It could be young adults. It could be those who, again, are underemployed, maybe in professions that are not allowing them to take care of their families. This gives them the ability to access the training necessary to be successful.
Okay. Are these day or evening classes, or do you offer, like, varying course, like, time for the course?
Well, the good thing about workforce development is that we're pretty flexible. So we have had day classes. We've had evening classes. We've been able to really access the best times for the individuals. We've had some people who have been working, again, in those underemployed positions, and we've had evening classes about because that just makes sense.
Right.
Those who don't have any jobs right now, daytime classes make sense for them because they can access transportation better. So we're really flexible with that.
Okay. Well, it sounds like a much-needed program in our area, and I thank you guys for putting this together and trying to better serve our community.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming out and accepting my invitation. And, you know, I don't want to take up too much time. I let my council members ask questions because we've had a pretty significant dialogue. But I do understand, do you want to go through about funding and how it's been? I understand there's been some changes there and maybe get into what has happened or what has changed in that regard.
Right. We initially started with our probation and parole population, but of course, state funding being what it is, that has eventually ended. So now we're working with various ways of trying to fund this through our career links. We're looking at grant opportunities. And really, where we can partner with the city and with our communities to make this happen is a really small investment when you look at what it's going to mean to people long range, the opportunity to have careers. And that's really what we tell and what we sell when we talk about the STEP program. We're getting people into careers, not jobs. Jobs can go away tomorrow, but careers will be something that they can leverage for the rest of their adult lives.
And then the other piece is, how can we, when I talk to folks in the community, I don't, some know about the program, but a lot don't. So what can we do a better job of to communicate and let folks know about this program and when they have classes and, yeah, so forth?
Well, we can work with our marketing team.
Yeah, so forth.
And your marketing team, right, to make sure that the word gets out. Again, we're trying to get a class starting, we're hoping, at the end of April, working with our housing community. And so we would love to be able to have other folks within our, the city of Harrisburg, take advantage of that. So of course, you and I will work closely on making sure that happens and the communication goes out. And opportunities like this, where the community gets to hear about what we're doing and how we're serving them, so.
Maybe putting a banner in front of City Hall.
That'd be good.
That was it for me. I'll let my colleagues answer more questions so they can learn more about the program.
Mr. Johnson.
So you said that program was established in 2016. How many people have went through the STEP program?
Well, we've had a total of 106 who graduated through from our reentry population. And we've worked with Tri-County Community Action for a grant, and we had 63, excuse me, that have passed through there. And of that 63 who went through there, 20 are currently employed, 16, rather, still in training to get employment. So it's a pretty good return on investment for those who make it through the actual STEP program and then the skills training. Because it's really a combination. We've kind of made the mistake in workforce development over the years of knowing that people need skills to get jobs, giving them the skills and saying, "Good luck." And then they're not successful in the workplace because they lack those skills necessary to interact positively with their teams. So we've turned that on its head and said, "Let's give them the soft skills, the professional skills first, then we'll give them the skill training necessary to be successful."
So I would go to, so if I was to enroll in the STEP program, I'll go through the soft skill, of course. And then I see in the back here, they have the skills training program.
Mm-hmm.
So then I would elect to kind of go into any one of these skills training programs from there, depending on my interest, or?
That's a good question. What we would do is, from the very start, we work with a program called WorkKeys. Workkeys is a national program from ACT, which really gauges someone's abilities, their foundational skills. We then match that with what the foundational skills are for a particular occupation. So when you first get in, we give you an assessment, and then we give you remediation, bad word from a college, but we give you the access to tutoring software throughout the entire four weeks. You get an hour of that every day. So at the very end, you then take an assessment, and we see, do you have the skills to go pursue the dream that you want? Maybe you wanted to be a welder, but you didn't have that skill set initially, but we gave you access to that software during that time period. At the end of it, you're now ready to be a welder.
And what are, I'm sorry. I had a mental block. I had a really good question. I know, because I've been talking with Dave about it, I know he kind of alluded to the funding issue. How much does it cost for you guys to put on the program? What are you guys looking for? And is there any cost, like, to the end user? To try to understand.
Well, we're trying not to make sure it never costs the end user. So that's why we've gone through different funding sources. It's $1,700 for the four weeks. And what we do is, again, they start out, meeting us from the first day. We partner with Suits To Careers. So by the third day, they're in professional dress, and they're required to have that professional dress every day for the four weeks. Again, we give them access to that hour of Workkeys training every day. On Fridays, we give them access to computer training because we know now that so much is done in a computer format, your benefits, your pay. So we want them to be, again, to be able to be as successful and competitive as possible when they walk out. We give them resumes. We give job interviews, mock interviews, where we have the business community come in and meet with them and really give them a good feel on how competitive they can be. So, you know, it's $1,700 for that four weeks, and then it depends on what that training is after that, what the cost is. And again, we really do not want people who are already trying to change their life to try to find the money for this.
And is there, is, and maybe I'm just kind of alluding more to say it, is there, like, a big funding gap that could potentially stop the program from happening?
It is, because, again, we, meaning HAC, want to partner with opportunities within the community to say, "This should not be a funding gap. It should not be something that stops our community from being successful," because it is so vital, and we've seen success. Losing the probation and parole contract, of course, that stops us from serving some of our reentrance. We're working with Career Links, but again, they have funding shortages as well. So it really is up to our community to say, "Is this important enough for us to do for those of us who have the least?"
And what's that dollar amount?
Again, the STEP is 17.
No, no, I'm talking about, I know it's 1,700 per person. I'm just saying, like, as far as the amount of people you put to a cohort, if somebody, if they were corporations or businesses that are out there listening, as far as that budget gap to run this STEP program on an annual basis, what does that look like?
I think we looked at, Dave, close to 400, 400,000, for the success, having a cohort of 15 every month.
Okay.
Running through. I'm sorry, I was.
I'm sorry. I kind of knew.
We both led each other there.
Yeah, yeah, I was leading you there. I was leading you there, so. But thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Ms. Allitt.
First, thank you guys for being here, our favorite community college for sure. You know, workforce development's a huge passion of mine to talk about, too, working in kind of the field of HR. So one of the things that I think is really interesting, and I like the program, how you set it up, I'm wondering, is there a point in the program that you talk more about conceptually transferable skills and helping to coach people to understand how they can see themselves in a different light based on the careers that they've had so far and how they could adapt that to different types of work or different things that might be more in demand?
A good question. The STEP program isn't a set piece where they're lectured for four weeks. There's a lot of interaction. There's a lot of opportunity to look at where you've been, where you'd like to go. We get them to set goals, and we look at really what their foundational abilities are. Because the last thing we want to do is to have people reach for the stars, have this great hope that they can do something, and the really positive reinforcement, and then fail because they don't have the skill level. So we're really honest and upfront with them and looking at what they would like to be. And we also talk with our employers, what's available. We have a great need in our healthcare communities. We have a great need in our manufacturing and our logistics. So we've put some of these programs to kind of feed into that because we know that equals a job. We've had people who, in one month, they were in halfway houses. Two months later, they were making $20,000 an hour with benefits.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a misconception sometimes in the community about, you know, the types of jobs that are out there and even the concept of earning a livable wage. And I think that there are plenty of opportunities that you can earn a livable wage on, but some people don't often see how their path to get there.
Right.
And I think that's a huge part of, if we're really addressing the workforce development issue, it's really helping people to understand probably what they might already know and how to apply it.
Right. And we talk a lot about career pathways as well. And we've been really fortunate to talk with our business communities about career pathways also, because they're just saying, "This is what I want coming through the door." And we're saying, "You might not get that initially, but if you work with us, we can build that pathway so that you'll eventually have that." And for a lot of our people, that's what they need to do. They need to start, you know, where they're comfortable, where they have some success, and then start building that. With the cooperation of the business community, we've had some people who have started as CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistance, and went all the way up to master's degrees in nursing, being paid for by the employer.
Right.
Because that's the field that we're in.
And I can speak to that directly, too. When I was doing some time in HR consulting, one of my clients was in the healthcare field, and we could not find people, but we worked with HAC to put together a little bit of an apprentice program to get people through. So, I mean, there's certainly value in being able to do that. And employers, I think, are really open to the concept of working with the talent and getting them the skills that they need. But sometimes it's hard to figure out that gap, and I think that's where HAC certainly is a great partner in the community in that respect, too.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Majors.
Well, a lot of the questions that I have have already been asked. But so in terms of the program, we're looking, as we're, since the contract with probation and parole seems to be there, how, what other outreach are you doing? I know we have a lot of different folks that do reentry programs in the community. Are you doing outreach to those kind of programs, or how do we get the word out?
We are. We're looking at, we work with CRAM, we work with a lot of our nonprofits. Again, I mentioned Suits To Careers. We're trying to leverage what they have, but what we're seeing is that a lot of them are really specialized in terms of, they can provide, you know, housing, or clothing, or food, or transportation. And they're not really set up to provide a broader array of training. So that's really what we're trying to do, is bring some awareness to this program and see if we can't get an umbrella that we can start capturing all those opportunities and putting them in a pathway that will allow, again, success for the people who need it the most. So we've looked at grants, and we're constantly searching to see what that availability is. Dave and I have had some ideas, some bouncing around, on how we might be able to excite our community to say, "This is worth doing." This is not one of these programs that just, "Oh, it feels good," but at the end of the day, no one can measure it. This is measurable because people actually are seeing a change in their lives.
And then, does the program have anything to address folks that may have language barriers or to work? I'm just trying to make sure that we're taking care of our whole community.
Yes, we do. Workforce development, one of the things that we do is we have an English as a second language component.
Okay.
So if we see that in there, we push in to make sure that they have that kind of support.
Okay. All right. And like I said, most of the questions that I did have still went in my brain and I've already got answered. But so, we appreciate you and thank you for the work that you guys are doing in our community.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels.
Yeah, thank you, and everyone's asked the questions. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I'm certainly grateful for you coming before us, and I thought it was important after me and Mr. Mattson met with you to impress upon, you know, the residents of Harrisburg what programs that you have to offer. And it's an exceptional program. I think it's a necessary program that you provide to for those who don't, you know, receive credits and those who are non-credit skills. So thank you so much, Dr. Skis and Mr. Rogers.
How's your, you know, one of the things, we had the leadership from the unions here, and they talked about different soft skills and issues of trying to get people into those fields. How's your relationship with the unions in regards to trying to place people coming out of the STEP programs into union jobs?
We haven't really reached out to them yet. A lot of the, again, we started with a lot of reentrance, so it was, let's, who will take reentrance into their workforce? And so we're slowly starting to put that, that's certainly one of the considerations that we're looking at, not just the unions, but other associations. We work with places like the Home Builds Association.
Okay.
We're creating an apprenticeship program with them that some of these participants can certainly segue right into. Again, we're looking at our healthcare organizations to see if we can build up some capacity in there, because many of the people that we would like to serve don't have records, they don't have things that would prevent them from being in these fields other than lacking the skills to do so.
Yeah, because I know, sir, especially when it comes to just eternity economy, different job opportunities within the unions. We were talking about even, like, machinists and logistics. Former employer of mine, when I used to work for the Hershey Plant, you know, it's going to be over, they're hiring over 400 people in the next three years. You know, so there's certain businesses, I think, and certain demands in the field where hopefully through outreach that they'll be able to put, you know, some financing behind it, because these could be their next, you know, long-term people inside these careers. And I think it's just more of trying to make that market of saying, "Hey, we're producing that workforce that's going to bring long-term stability for your, for their career and their work environment," so.
You're absolutely right. And opportunities like this to tell our story is really vital, so we appreciate that. Because we've been talking to Hershey about putting some apprenticeship opportunities out there and bringing our community. How nice would that be to have members of our community getting these opportunities, getting skills through our apprenticeship programs, and making these kinds of wages that allow them to take care of not just themselves, but their families and their family's futures? I mean, that would be a win for everybody in the community.
Mr. Rogers, one thing I did while you were talking with Mr. Johnson, I don't want to discourage anyone from wanting to be in the program, so you were indicating that, what services do you provide or what can you provide for those who don't have the monetary? That's fine.
Well, we actually, thanks to our foundation, we have scholarship money that is available for some of our programs.
And that's what I wanted you to say on record.
Yes, absolutely. We don't want to discourage anyone that wants to try to make a change in their life, not just through this program, but we have several other programs that work well as well, so.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much again. I think it's a valuable program that you brought before this council, and it's certainly an exceptional program. I wish you much success.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Is there anything that the city of Harrisburg can do? Please reach out to us and let us know.
That's all. Thank you.
We're going to move on with another communication, under communication, we have another presentation by the National Coalition of 100 Black Women, the Harrisburg chapter, Ms. Trina Brown.
Good evening, and thank you for.
Ms. Plains.
Allowing us the time to introduce ourselves. I am a board member of the Harrisburg chapter of the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. My name is Trina Brown, and Shawla Plains is also a board member. The National Coalition is an organization that advocates on behalf of women and girls of color.
Could you please speak up so that we can hear you?
The National Coalition is an organization that advocates on behalf of women and girls of color to close gender disparities in education, health, and economic empowerment. And the national, the national organization, we have 61 chapters and over 2,500 members. So you multiply that 2,500 members with their friends, families, and networks, so you know it has a powerful voice. It has public policy, and there's a legislative day next month in Washington that happens annually. We were installed in 2012, and installation is not an easy, you just don't sign up and say you're a part. It takes a while before you're installed, and you have to go through quite a bit of a process to be a chapter. And all of our members are volunteer members, and of course, with any national organization, you pay dues. So we have dedicated members that have experience in many different fields. So they're very serious about not only the women and girls inequities, but also about doing things in the community. So just to give you a background about some of the things we've done, we have an educational scholarship that we provide every year to a high school student going to college. We have had financial aid workshops because many people in our community are first or second-time generations going to college. They don't know that much about financial aid. They're reactive instead of proactive. We have a member of our organization, that's what she does. So we teach them about the deadlines, grants, and things like that, so there's not a lot of burden on the parents, and they don't miss those deadlines, and then they're wondering how their child is going to go to college. We also have had budgeting seminars, basic budgeting seminars, telling people how to budget their money, how to save. It's amazing how some people really don't know how to save and credit repair, how to get their credit in order. These are basic things that are needed in order to be successful in our society today. We've had health fairs with health screenings for diabetes and, you know, different things like that, and we've had, oh, we've had health fairs and health screenings to try to get people to be healthier. One of our big events is, last year, we had a community baby shower. And what we did is, we had experts come in and provide pre and post maternal care. This was the first community baby shower in this area. It was a big success. It was at the Cumberland Courts Community Center. We had media coverage, and we gave out a lot of baby essential items, and again, we provided a lot of information. If you have that foundation as a parent, you know, in the beginning, you know, it grows with you. You can be more successful in your parenting. So we provided parenting skills for them. And one thing that was very interesting to me is we had quite a few men show up, fathers. So that was really a nice twist. We have, every year, we do something with regard to HIV/AIDS, particularly Women and Girls HIV/AIDS Day. We have had what we call lunch and lounge series to teach you about it. We've had people that have been impacted by HIV personally, that they have it or a friend has had it, to come and tell their story, so people know that HIV looks like everybody. You know, you never know who has it, and, you know, it's something that's in our society. We have to learn how to deal with it, and we have to learn how to reduce that rate. So that's an important agenda item for the National Coalition of 100 Black Women. And our events are open to the public. Most of them are free, a lot of them are free, and they're open to anybody, men, women. You know, men can show up. And some of them are fundraisers. We have to have some fundraisers in order to have these free events. So again, it's, we're advocacy organization, but we do a lot in the community. And like I said, our members are awesome. They are committed, they are dedicated. And I just can't say enough about how important this organization is to them, and I wanted you just to know who we are and hear about us. you just to know who we are and hear about us. And we do have an HIV/AIDS event coming up on April 7th, and I'll let Shawla talk about that. She's in the committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Our HIV/AIDS event is in, is in honor of the National HIV Women and Girls Awareness Month. We've been having this event for the past, I guess, three or four years, and what we did was we had people in the community who were impacted with HIV/AIDS. We've honored women amongst our group, and we also, it's really just an informative piece, it's a chat and chew. Our statistics tell us that 17104, 17103 have some of the highest rates of new HIV/AIDS cases. And so, it's important, we believe it's important for us to make sure that our children and their families know and can understand about, you know, practicing safe sex and all the other healthy pieces that go along with it. So, this year, we're gonna have it down at Redeem Church in Stilton, 806 Wood Street. It's from 11 to 1. It's a, it's a free event. We'll offer door prizes. We're also gonna have a healthy piece on how to eat healthy, how to maintain, exercise, and all the pieces that go along with, with just being, having a healthy lifestyle. So, again, we're, we're, we've been a great group. We've been at this since 2012 as a collective, and we've had the ability to engage new, younger members. Trina and I were the, two of the older members that started the group back in 2010 or 11, I think it was. And so, now, it's nice to see that we have a nice, nice younger group that's joined us and kind of taken over and really having, have lifted the work that we're doing around NCBW. So, we thank you for this opportunity.
You're quite welcome. Now, I have a question. Is there an age limit with this?
21. 21, you have to be at least 21.
We do have a mentoring program.
Okay, that's what I was gonna, that was my next question.
We provided information in that packet.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Daniels?
Your business card, we have it, your contact info.
We gave you a packet of information there.
Okay.
And we do have another initiative, too. It's called Women, Women on the Move, where we recognize women in the community that are doing great things. So, there's quite a few things going on. If you need information, we can be reached at NCBWHarrisburg@yahoo.com. Our phone number is 717-831-8489, and that's in your packet. And you also have-
That's in our package?
Yes.
Okay.
And you also have a copy of the community baby shower flyer. Please share that with anybody. Like I said, it's free, you know, space is limited, but it's a fun event and it's very educational.
Oh, okay. Mr. Majors, do you have any questions?
I know. Thank you for all the work that you do in the community, and I'll reach out on how I can help by donating and making sure that I'm allowing, letting the woman in my life know that this is another organization that they can be a part of. So, thank you.
Even if they don't want to join, you know, you can support us in various ways. So, and I do have a Patreon list here if you want to sign up, $5, have your name in it.
All right, all right. I'll be in touch.
Well, Mr.-
Thank you for, for being here. One of the things I, I thought I'd bring up, just 'cause I think there might be a natural partnership for, particularly your mentoring program. My day job is with Harrisburg University, but one of the programs I'm really proud of HU has developed is something called the STEM Up Network, which is a specific program targeting women in STEM. And, and the reason why I think it's really important is 71% of the jobs in even 2018 and beyond will be to those impacted by the world of STEM, so science, tech, engineering, and management, and things along those lines. But women continue to be underrepresented. While women might make up 50% of the workforce in STEM, it's significantly less. And so, particularly in communities of color, it's even much less. So, I think it might be a great opportunity to partner with STEM Up Network, because it's right here, and I think it fits very much in, in the vision that you're putting forth, particularly from an education perspective and a mentoring perspective, and it's right here in your backyard. So, I'll try to make sure I connect.
Thank you, and that is one of National's platform for us. So, that's, that would be excellent.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's huge right now, and, and particularly, I mean, I'm proud of the work that the university's doing with, you know, 51% of our undergrads are actually women, which is unheard of when you think about STEM, but the impact is great, and, and more and more young women, I think, need to fully understand that they can, they can be an astronaut, they can be-
Right.
-any of the things that they can set out to do, and sometimes it's just kind of creating that pathway.
Well, I have your record. I will be contacting you.
Do it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I don't have any questions. I'm gonna try to get my mom to get down with the Coalition of Black Women.
Wonderful.
I mean-
You have him on record, too.
I want a copy of this tape.
She watches the, she watches the meeting, so she, I'm gonna put her, put her on the spot and say after hours.
Okay, okay, okay.
But thank you for all you, all the work you guys do in the community.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna follow you guys on Instagram and Facebook.
Good, good. And we also have fun events, too. We have celebrity bartender events, the district, we have paint with a twist events, like, you know, you paint and drink wine, and, you know. So, we do fun things, too, as fundraisers, you know.
Mr. Matson.
Thank you for all you're doing in the community and whatever I can do to help. Please let me know. I don't have any questions. But thank you for the great work.
Thank you.
And Ms. Green.
I don't have any questions as well. I guess I'll echo everyone else in saying thank you for the work that you've been doing. Thank you for coming tonight, just to spread the word and make us aware of the work that you're doing in our community, because it's important for us to know, so that we can spread the word as well, and it also holds us accountable that we need to start showing up to some of these events, right?
Right. We appreciate you letting us come here. We really do, and there's some of our members over there, so they're here to support. Thank you so much.
If you want to introduce them, you can, you can do that as well, please.
You want to present up? You want to introduce yourself? Some of me not want to, but just stand up anyway.
Well, that's our president. President Hammond, President.
All right.
Tiffany Brown. Sage Freeman is our secretary. Dorothy Scott is our treasurer. Rochelle Edgington is our chairman.
All right. Thank you, ladies.
We have personal trainers, we have financial experts, we have marketing, you name it, we have somebody in that group that does it.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you all very much for coming this evening, and I'm glad that I interacted with you and brought you in, so that you could present this to council. I certainly will be a part of that as well, and I will give a donation as well.
Okay, wonderful.
You got, what, three, four more than this?
Yeah.
Seven packets, seven donations.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you, Ms. Plains.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on. Mr. Johnson, you are in the audience. Can you please come up, because I'm gonna bug you for a minute. Last night, there was information surrounding the farm show. So, can we just get some clarification on, on that bidding process, why you didn't bid, or why you did what you did?
Good evening, City Council. I didn't see your lovely faces in the wild.
And I'm sorry to put you, I'm sorry to put you on, on the spot, but I think it's important that last night, when we discussed this, you know, council members were concerned, and the mayor did give us a clarification, but we, I think that you could give us a little bit more, as to why-
No, it's, it's, I'm glad, you know, you asked, because I don't want nobody leaving out here with the wrong impression. It's easy. Basically, with the farm show, as you all well know, we actually sent out, you know, letters out to everybody that, you know, all these private haulers that we once had, that any, any trash that was, any trash basically generated in the city that we supposed to actually haul the trash, okay? So, we sent all those letters out. We had a few stragglers, and the farm show was one. So, we set up a meeting with the farm show to let them know that, hey, you gotta come on board, like the rest of the private haulers, you know, are. So, what we found out was, they have a couple of trash trucks down at the farm show, and they're union, okay? So, again, we can't take union work, but the ones who use the trash trucks, that's their daily operation, you know, the office trash, trash they have on the dock or what have you, okay? So, that's daily stuff, right? But the event is a whole nother issue, okay? When they have events down at the farm show, they have your, your, your containers, okay? Your 30-yarders and 40-yard containers, and they're hauled with the container truck. So, the young lady who we met with, she didn't think that we could, you know, basically, you know, do the work, but we assured her that we could do the work. So, what we did was, because again, the farm show is a, is a big account, plus, you know, trash is generated in the city, and we should be taking their trash. So, we didn't want to let them off the hook. So, what we did was, we said, okay, we'll do a trial run, okay? We didn't charge them anything, and it didn't cost us anything. So, what I did, you know me, I'm very resourceful. I just basically reached into my resource, you know, and reached out and asked, you know, Graybill, could you help us? And it was free of charge. So, they had the containers, they had the container truck. Last year, we did three events, okay, and we hauled the trash, okay? So, this year, right, we was in the process of actually purchasing a, a, a container truck, but because we was gonna get the two front-end loader trucks, because, you know, we got commercial accounts, I never front-end loaders now, because in the past, we couldn't do commercial accounts, because we didn't have that equipment. So, basically, what we trying to do in sanitation, and y'all all well know, is be self-sufficient, so we can just make sure that we can do all the trash in the city. That's what our goal is, okay? So, what we did was, we said, well, we need the two front-end loaders more than we need the container truck, because we got, we bought two older front-end loaders, and if one of them would go down or something, we'd be, we'd be in a world of hurt, because those type of trucks, they hard, you know, you just can't get one of those, it's kind of hard to get. So, we said that would be our priority to get them, so if we had to pull one hour service or whatever, we still can keep on doing our job. So, we took the retainer truck, the container truck off, off the table for 2019. So, what we did was, two quotes, as we normally do, put a rep in, in winter equipment. When we, when I first started working in sanitation, it was only two dumpster and container companies that we actually dealt with. One was Black Manufacturing, I think it's Manufacturing, I know it's Black was the first name, and Winter Equipment was the other one, okay? So, Black Manufacturing went out of business, so it was only one then, that was Winter Equipment. Graybill got in the business about two years ago, buying dumpsters and, and the containers. So, basically, Graybill came in lower than Winter Equipment. So, short, it's a short term, as far as us actually doing the events for the farm show, because again, we will make sure we got that account. So, as of right now, I got four invoices here, which one thing about the state, I give them kudos, they do pay on time, and they pay in full. They paid, actually, they paid $40,850.90, to be exact. So, we did four events so far, okay? And now, I just found out from a young lady, they had one more event, which they didn't have last year in August. So, what happened was, yesterday was, while Bruce and them was down here, we wanted a reallocation, because again, like I told you, last year, it was free. We didn't, we didn't charge anyone, okay? So, I didn't know how much the events was. So, I didn't put enough money in the line item, okay? So, again, state paid in full, we paid Graybill upfront, but now we need to pay our invoices. That's what that was about last night. It had nothing to do with, so I guess y'all was talking about black contractors, it had nothing to do with that. The state don't have anything to do with that. You know, like I said, two quotes, the only two people that I know who deals with containers and dumpsters is Winter Equipment and Graybill, okay? So, like I said, Graybill came in lowest, that's how they got it. And hopefully, we bought some containers, we actually purchased 15 containers this year. Now, next year, like I said, we'll buy the container truck, and then we'd be self-sufficient. We wouldn't need Graybill or anyone else, we can do our own thing, and that's what we're looking forward to doing. So, what we wanted to do was make sure that we brought, you know, the State Farm Show on board with us. So, that's how that happened. But, you know, to even go even further, as far as black contractors, you know, I'm the last person to be against that. So, if, if they actually had dumpsters and containers, if it was a black company, I'd have been more than, more than, more than welcome to them, you know what I'm saying? But, them the only two that I know, and I've been here 20-plus, so, you know. And, and then, I know for Public Works, you know, Lawn Care, we got a bid out for that. We had like a little workshop, and it was quite a few, I'm gonna say about four black contractors that came down to the workshop, you know? So, again, they, they bitted on it, and, and we, we looking forward to, you know, people's stuff is lined up, you know? Again, I'm about hiring, you know, black contractors, you know, that live in the city, because again, that's important, very important. But, State Farm Show don't have anything to do with that.
Okay.
Not at all.
Well, thank you. We just need a clarification, but Mr. Majors would like to say-
No, the only thing, the clarification regarding that service had nothing to do with minority contractors. That was just making sure that it was actually bid out versus a sole source. So, you're telling us that there were two bids?
Not bid, it was quotes.
Or quotes, excuse me, quotes. There were two quotes, you received two quotes, Graybill was the lowest, had the lowest quote. We're good to go. That was the conversation yesterday regarding that, had nothing to do with African-American contractor. It was, did we get quotes? And we got the lowest, the lowest bidder, the lowest quote got to work.
I proceeded, I proceeded.
That was it?
And I wanted to, I think the other question was last night, I guess, Ms. Daniels, you had a question about Honey, Honey Street?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So, Honey Street, we'll take care of that tomorrow. You know, we had that little snow, that's why I didn't get back with you.
No, but last night, we were talking about the street paving, not the garbage.
You talking about street paving in Honey Street? Okay, well, that, well, their issue back there is illegal dumping. So, that was on our list to actually clean up. We got that little bit of snow, but we'll be out there tomorrow to take care of that, and I'm gonna show you some before and after pictures, because it won't be long for it to look like that, like we didn't touch, because that's a, that's a trouble area back there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, okay.
All right, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sorry I put you on the spot, but-
I'm not even fucking on the spot. What I get, they go on the big bully for.
Shh, don't say that too loud.
They already checked it out. They already did the right little, you know?
I believe you. We're moving on. Last night, we had Ms. Shilla Dowford come in from Impact Harrisburg to discuss some issues with, not only with the Mardi Street Square, but also with Community First Fund. I just want to make a statement regarding that presentation last night. Last night, Shilla Dowford, the executive director of Impact Harrisburg, and Brian Hudson, the CEO of the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, and a board member of Impact Harrisburg, presented to City Council on the various projects Impact Harrisburg is involved in within the city of Harrisburg that are designed to lift up our city and its residents. One of the projects Ms. Dowford and Mr. Hudson discussed was the Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund, which is a $1 million loan program designed to provide funding to startups and existing businesses within the city of Harrisburg. The loan fund has a particular focus on small business development projects and businesses owned and operated by minorities within the city. The Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund is administered by Community First Fund and will provide micro loans starting at $1,000, and loans going up to $100,000. Impact Harrisburg provided $350,000 in seed money for this fund. PHFA, Mr. Hudson's organization, provided $650,000 in seed money for the fund. The loans will carry a 5% interest rate. City Council applauds the development of this loan fund, and as was stated again and again last evening, City Council strongly encourages the city administration to work with Impact Harrisburg and Community First Fund in seeking out and nurturing small businesses within the city. Success is possible through collaborations and alliances. All of the citizens of Harrisburg must be given an opportunity to participate in commerce and to achieve success. The second matter City Council expressed very deep concern about regarding last night's meeting with Impact Harrisburg was the report that only a 2% MBE and DBE participation level is present on the city and CRW's joint multi-model project. This, the multi-model project, is a very large project of several million dollars. It employs many people. Impact Harrisburg has provided over $5 million in funding to this project, and it has serious concerns about the poor level of participation. Well, so does City Council. 2% is unacceptable, and let me say that again, 2% is unacceptable. Let me state again for this record, as the president of City Council, that City Council fully expects the city administration to work cooperatively with Impact Harrisburg and its partners in developing a strategy to immediately improve the level of MBE and WBE participation on the multi-model project. City Council has pushed and prodded this administration to demonstrate a greater commitment, not through words, but through actions, to all the residents of this city. Last night, we heard more excuses from this administration. We don't need more excuses. We need a proactive plan by the administration to improve this participation levels on the multi-model project. Impact Harrisburg spoke of attempts to work with city officials that have gone nowhere. That must change immediately. Our council will step in and take action. You, city authorities, must show a conscience of character and a capacity to work on that which is right in front of you, the multi-model project. We are a city that is over 50% African-American and 20% Hispanic. If we can't do better than 2% on a major project, something is deeply wrong. If we can't do better than two percent on a major project, something is deeply wrong and we need to fix it, and we need to do that now. Do we stop the project until we fix it? Or what is the problem? No more spinning around, no more hiding behind legalities and processes. We look embarrassing, foolish, and so do you. You are the city leaders, we need to act like it. Enough with excuses, tell me what we are doing to fix the problem. Like Impact Harrisburg, we're here to move the city forward. Last night, Mr. Woolley was the only one among you who actually stepped up and said he would work with Impact Harrisburg on a remedy. I, as Council President, wish that Mayor Patton Foose, Mr. Grover, and Ms. Parker could have offered less excuses and more remedies to this issue. My disappointment is real, because I and council care about all of the residents of this city and providing opportunities to lift up our communities. Everyone needs a paycheck, that's basic. Eagles and silos have no place in this discussion. As was stated last night, time is of the essence. We expect a report in two weeks on progress made in improving participation levels. Please, don't continue to make excuses. Let's do something positive on this project. I await your word. And I'm sorry that I had to do that, because I've received so many calls after last nights that I think that I needed to make a point the City Council is not playing. We are now looking for action. Anyone else have any statements before I move on? Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
I concur. I mean, I think the main thing is just understanding, um, the time period of it, and understanding that going into, um, this bid agreement, we, everyone knew what the criterias were. Um, I think, um, just from my research, when I originally looked at it back last year, I think there was a lot of opportunities that were missed that could have included more minority contractors. Um, and we're at the, like I said last night, you know, we're coming to an impasse, and one thing I don't want to see is, we want to see progress in getting our streets paved, we want to make sure the people are afforded those opportunities to work the job, bid on contracts, are able to reap the benefits of the economic benefits of being part of such a project. And if we can't get it right with this project and all the other projects that are down the road, you know, we have to kind of really, you know, do all we can in making sure that we are dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and going above and beyond to get to where we need to be as, as far as participation levels.
Um, I'd just echo what my fellow council member said. Um, one of the things we've done is we set goals, and setting goals is very important, but if no one follows through with them, they're, it's essentially a joke. You know, you can set a goal as high as you want or as low as you want, but if no one follows through and makes sure it's actually met, it's kind of like the city of Harrisburg is a joke. You can say, sure, well, we'll try to attain these numbers, but no one ever checks to see if you even try. Two percent works as long as you say, oh yeah, we, we put some effort into it, there's no, uh, follow-up and no accountability for the effort. Um, I think that two percent is absolutely ridiculous, you can't tell me that you did any type of outreach or any type of effort to get, um, minority-owned businesses and only attain two percent. Um, and it's something that it seems like is the MO for the city, that we put goals in, but no one follows up on making sure we actually reach those goals. So I think it's time to hold the contractors and the city accountable to make for sure that we're actually, uh, holding people's feet to the fire, um, to reach our goals that we've set.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay. Oh, Ms. Majors, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'll just reiterate my comments again from last evening. We have goals, we need to make every effort to achieve those goals. And just like with other contracts that have been let out by, I know Capital Region Water had done in the past, and if the city needs to do it on some projects, we need to, um, we need to hold projects if our minority, if our contractors are not meeting our participation goals. The only way a contractor learns that a organization is not putting up with the, the same, uh, the same practices that have occurred in the past is to actually put, stop, put a hold to it and, and encourage them to work with us again to reach the goals that we're, we're setting. We, uh, I mean, everyone else up here has already said their piece, but it's, it's, it's true. I mean, we need to have more inclusion of minority businesses and small businesses on projects in the city of Harrisburg. We, we are, we are working to increase those numbers, but, and I've, I've heard before, while our professional services were hitting those goals, okay, but that's not where the real money is going to be being spent in the city of Harrisburg. It's going to be on these projects that, not just this one project, but projects that are going to be coming down the pipe. And we all know a lot of money's going to be spent in the city of Harrisburg over the next ten, twenty years, and we want everyone, everyone that has, that wants an opportunity to participate on those contracts to have that opportunity, and that we increase our minority participation. And I know, speaking for one council member, and I, I know that many of my other council members feel the same way, we want to increase that participation, and if, and if the buck has to stop at City Council, that's where the buck will stop.
Anyone else before I go? Thank you. And I'm sorry, administration, if you think I'm berating you, I'm not berating you, but, um, you're not out in the community and they're stopping me on the streets and they're stopping me a giant, can't even go to grocery store, because they're, they're upset behind things that's going on in this city. So they heard what's happening on TV last night, and they have a right, the residents of this city have a right to make a statement and expect more from this council. So we're putting you on notice, we're putting fire under your feet, we expect a different outcome. Moving on to courtesy of the floor at this time, anyone to my right that would like to come speak before?
Good evening, I'm Shiladaw Ford, 2033 Bellevue Road, Harrisburg, PA. And I'm standing before you not as the Executive Director of Impact Harrisburg per se, but as a resident of the city. I will, um, refer back to, um, some of the discussion last night, which was about the Harrisburg Business Opportunity Fund. And as we talked about that fund, the city, um, and you, City Council, when I say the city, I mean the city as a whole, talked about the one million dollars that the city has, um, in a fund. And, um, as a part of my work at Impact Harrisburg, I get lots of phone calls, and a lot of them are from residents who need help. And I'm, I'm always kind of telling them that they can go to this place or that place. And, um, a lot of those calls are from residents that are homeowners and might have a leak, or they may have a sewer issue, and they have a seven thousand dollar bill because they had to dig out the sewer, you know, the pot, the, the line and get a new line put in, and they don't have much money, they might have suffered some hardship. And I was thinking about the, um, the monies that the city has, that we talked a lot about, the million dollars, I guess it is, or about that. And I thought about a program that I read about, because that's a part of my job. It's a program in Philadelphia, so it's a large program there, but it doesn't have to be large here, and I just wanted to put this thought out there. It's, um, I have a little bit of information about it, because we have some resources, and it may be a place where we can start to think about how we do something with the residents of the city. It's called the, um, the Housing Preservation Loan Program, and it's a larger program in Philadelphia, but it's not much larger. And it's a new ho- uh, loan program, it's housed under the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, and it gives homeowners up to, um, um, up to, it says a hundred and twenty-five thou- uh, twenty, excuse me, twenty-five thousand dollars to fix up their homes. And these are three percent interest loans for ten years, three percent interest. We talked a lot last night about having loans that have fairly low interest rates, um, and for people who really can't, as we talked about, you know, and what we do, can't access the capital markets because they don't have the right kinds of credit scores. These are loans that are for people who have, um, credit scores that are too low to be able to access traditional lending institutions. And it comes right out of Philadelphia's, um, it comes out of City Council. And so when we, when I think about that one million dollars that we have sitting there, and I think about the people who call me all the time, who are looking for help, I would like to just bring that to the attention of everyone and say, this might be an opportunity. I don't want to see, as a resident and as someone who works here in a professional capacity, I think that there may be an opportunity to think creatively about how we put those dollars to good use. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll send information to, to the city clerk so that he can distribute it, because I have additional information. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Okay, thank you, moving on. Prove of minutes, proof of the legislation session minutes of March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Council members, are any corrections, deletions, submissions? Hearing none, minutes stand as approved. Moving on, report to committee, report from Chair Allot on the work session of March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Allot, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am. All right. Uh, last night at the work session, we had several pieces of legislation up for discussion. Uh, first was Bill one of two thousand eighteen, this would be an ordinance that would amend the appropriation and expenditures procedures, um, to increase the budgetary transfer threshold from twenty thousand to fifty thousand dollars. We did have a great deal of discussion about this. We are not ready to vote on this at this time, I think we're going to wait on a few things coming back from the administration, um, and there's probably some work and tweaking that we might want to do to this bill going forward. So, um, we are going to punt that forward, um, and we'll definitely be revisiting that in the future. Also up for discussion was Bill two of two thousand eighteen and Resolution thirty-two of two thousand eighteen. These are companion pieces of legislation, uh, to deal with a, the approval and the, um, receipt for two million dollars, um, a loan from the Commonwealth of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, uh, for the purpose of restoring, repairing, and improving streets within the city situated in South Harrisburg. So this is obviously a very worthwhile project. Uh, the term of the loan is actually very good, it's a very low interest rate loan for us, and the payback period is very favorable. Um, I believe this will, um, be something that'd be very beneficial for the city to be able to move forward with. Uh, this will actually be voted on at the next legislative session, and this is due to advertising requirements of the bill. Um, so we will definitely look forward to voting on that at the next legislative session. Also up for discussion was Resolution sixteen of two thousand eighteen, was a resolution approving the second proposed two thousand eighteen budget reallocation. This reallocation included setting up the, um, the means for receiving the two million dollar loan from the state. In addition, other allocations that we were looking at, um, would be to account for the return of an unused part of a PA Gaming Control Board Grant Fund, uh, so we had to do some reconciliation there. Also being reconciled, um, as talked about earlier with Aaron, was the, um, allotment for funds for the special trash pickups and hauling for the Farm Show complex. And then lastly, was an allocation to adjust the salary for two positions due to, um, the loss of a, um, not the loss in terms of anything damaging, but to an employee leaving the city and settling, uh, the salary for positions within the Lurder Administrator and the Business Development, um, arena. So those are things that are all part of that budget reallocation that will be up for a vote tonight, and I urge my colleagues, colleagues to vote in affirmation of that reallocation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allot. Moving on, a report from Chair Mattson on the work session of March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Mattson, are you ready with your report?
I am. Uh, we received, uh, well, Jackie Parker, the Director of Community and Economic Development, gave a presentation on the Community Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG. Um, we've just got a update on the status of the process, we have received applicants or the applications for the monies or grant monies. Currently, we are going to be reviewing the applicants, I personally plan on reaching out to all of them and getting an understanding of the projects and, uh, getting to know them. Um, it should be noted that this year, we are getting less money coming in, so we're receiving the same amount of applicants, but there's less money, so it's going to be a difficult and competitive process, but I hope that, um, we'll be able to work through it and work with these various groups to see, uh, reach some sort of positive resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mattson. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, we have none this evening. Moving on to ordinance for amendment, we have none as well. Uh, moving on to ordinance for final passage, we also have none. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution sixteen, two thousand eighteen, Mr. Petroski, please read that into record.
Resolution sixteen in two thousand eighteen was moved by Mr. Allot, second by Ms. Williams, it's a resolution approving the second proposed two thousand eighteen budget reallocation.
Any questions or comments, council members, on Resolution sixteen? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution sixteen passes.
Thank you, moving on to Resolution forty-one.
Resolution forty-one of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Daniels, second by Ms. Green, it's a resolution authorizing the execution of a federally reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for acceptance of transportation alternative program funding for the Riverwalk Project.
That would be placed in Parks and Enrichment Committee. Moving on to Resolution forty-two.
Resolution forty-two of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Daniels, second by Ms. Green, it's a resolution certifying that certain grant requirements and objectives of a community conserve, conservation partnership grant for the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation Natural Resources have been completed.
That also would be placed in Parks and Enrichment, uh, Committee. Moving on to Resolution forty-three.
Resolution forty-three of two thousand eighteen was moved by Mr. Major, second by Ms. Daniels, it's a resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
That would be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution forty-four.
Resolution forty-four of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson, it's a resolution appointing Mr. Christopher Nave to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
That would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution forty-five.
Resolution forty-five of two thousand eighteen was moved by Ms. Williams, second by Mr. Mattson, it's a resolution appointing Mr. Joseph V. Link to serve on the Harrisburg Planning Commission.
That also would be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to old business council members, are there any old business? Mr. Johnson?
Um, I've been trying to follow up on a resident's concern in regards to some cars, some signs inside his neighborhood, just trying to get a response to see status update. Okay, anybody?
Who, who are you asking that?
Who are you asking the question to?
I guess I'm asking the mayor right now.
I, I don't know what the question is.
Um, as regards to Mr. Domenico, he sent the, yeah, anyone?
Per the email that we sent you, Mr. Domenico's, uh, was, basically spoke with our three-one-one operators, tickets have been open and his complaints have been referred to the different departments, they have not been resolved yet, but they are being tracked, and I would think we should know something by next week.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking up, on the follow-up of the resolvement portion of it.
Well, right, it, it hasn't been resolved yet, but they are now being tracked. Sometimes you can't just do it right away, but, because some people are on vacation, that kind of thing, but it has been referred to the appropriate officials in the different departments, and it's being tracked through the three-one-one system. I actually checked on it today after I got your email.
Okay, is there any type of timeline or anything I can go back and tell? I mean, you, what?
In fact, he has a way, we have told him that he has a way of tracking it himself and calling back or, or simply emailing us back to track it. I can't, until we're able to talk to the officials who are going out and investigating it, we can't give an exact timetable.
A lot of his, a lot of it has to do with just abandoned cars, so it just takes, it just takes anyone from, anyone from the police division or, um, parking enforcement to actually go out there, look at the vehicles.
Correct, I understand, and one of the problems is that one of the key people, actually two of the key people are on vacation. So that is what was, has been holding it up, but we will get back to it after the holidays and try to get some resolution, or at least a timetable.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, any other old business council members? Moving on to new business, council members, any new business? Okay, only thing that I have is, Harrisburg City Council will be putting down a request for a proposal for special counsel. It will be at our work session next Tuesday, and then after that, we'll put it on the agenda for it to go out for approval. Any other new business council members? Motion to adjourn?
Subway.
Have a second?
Second.
Meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you.